Call this meeting, board with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, justice, or other.
Brokoff.
Hawley. Hawley here, Fairwell.
Here.
Fairwell here, Ossling.
Here.
Ossling here, Thompson.
Here.
Thompson here, Carr.
Here.
Carr here, Pittman.
Here.
Pittman here, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here, Fulo.
Here.
Fulo's here, Johnson. Johnson, Amson, Frostow.
Here.
Frostow here, Bellado.
Here.
Bellado here, Vietta.
Here.
Vietta here, Rita. Rita, Amson, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here, call present.
Thank you very much, council. Before we begin the committee of the whole meeting, I'm just going to read into the record caption of the certificate or the heading on the certificate of service of this particular meeting. And it was certified by an officer of police department that noticed an agenda for a committee of the whole meeting, committee of the whole special meeting of the city council of the city of Belavon to be held at 2434 Vermont Street. Just lost the screen. To be held at 2434 Vermont Street, Belavon, Illinois on March 22, 2018 at 6:30 PM. And they noticed an agenda for a special meeting of the city council of the city of Belavon to be held at 2434 Vermont Street, Belavon, Illinois on March 22, 2018 at 7:15 PM to the persons listed. And the persons listed are the city clerk, the city treasurer, and the 14 aldermen of the city council of the city of Belavon. A formal copy of the read of the proof of service will be delivered to the city clerk after the meeting by Director of Finance Administration, Mike Marzal.
Thank you very much. Any public comment? If not, let me move on to Mr. Marzal. This is appropriation ordinance discussion, and making of the amendment recommendations of draft the appropriate ordinance.
Thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, I'd like to go over the appropriations in greater detail with the council. I'd like to highlight the areas that we have reduced our expenses as well as any new programs or expenses that we're looking to do in 2018. I'm happy to answer any questions as we go through this, but I would like to go through this page by page so we can make sure we thoroughly answer all the questions. And I'm really seeking suggestions from the council on any changes that need to happen to this document so it can get approved. I do want to note that if the city does not approve this and it's filed with the county, we could jeopardize the levy, our sales tax and property tax. So it's important to me that we make the changes tonight so that we can get this approved and be in compliance. Starting with page one, one of the highlights I would like to point out is that in the sub total for general fund operating, we are actually presenting a $503,000 less expensive general fund compared to 2017. So this, the general operating fund, which is the main source of funding for the city's operations, is a half a million dollars less than it was in 2017. Now, it is almost $2,000,000, 1.965 million dollars higher in contingency, but that is primarily due to the fact that we put in there for a new engine and a new truck for the fire department. Again, contingency doesn't mean that we're going to be expending this. I also want to go back and say that this is an appropriations. This is giving the city the authority to spend up to this amount. We do, in years past, we have not spent up to this amount. In fact, last year, we spent almost $10 million less than what the city appropriated. And by closely monitoring our expenses on a daily and a monthly basis, my intention is to come in under this appropriation amount for 2018.
Mike?
Yes?
You said we came in $10 million, okay?
Compared to what it was, so last year, we appropriated $37,500,000, $37,500,000. And the total that we spent-
Now, Mike, you appropriated $36,283, and you spent $26,707.
Correct. Thank you. I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong document. And that's at the bottom of page one. Going into fund? Yes.
Mike, how much, from last week to this week, how much were you able to cut?
I only made small changes based off the conversation that happened last Tuesday. I wasn't given any suggestions or directions to cut. I think we moved around about maybe $10,000 from point A to point B. I did send out an email with those changes. I believe there were six of them, one of them being the mayor's office for the expenses, also moving the 1099 employees in the building department, and four other small changes.
So I went through this over the past week, and I was able to cut $7,739,827. So the appropriation I have is $29,760,281,98. So if we want to go through yours, or we can maybe go through some of the changes, there's 250 line item changes I made. So we can take a vote on all 250. I'm not sure what, how we want to proceed, but we got, I got it under $30 million.
If you're offering an amendment, you should offer the amendments and let the council know.
Sure. That's, I'm, I just wanted to know the procedure of how we're gonna-
Why don't you let him finish his presentation, and then you can offer amendments. You should offer them line item by line item so that the city council can determine line item by line item whether they wish to agree, okay, or disagree. And then it's up to you to try and substantiate what you're doing and what you're suggesting.
Sure.
All right?
Thank you, Karen.
And what I would suggest, just so that there's some order to the proceeding, is that each individual who wishes to make changes or comments should do it. You can start with Alderman of Donahue if you care to, but that makes it a little bit more orderly than being questioned from the right, the left, the center. But I would suggest letting him proceed first, and then you can make your suggestions and request amendments as they go along.
Absolutely. Thank you, Karen. That answered my procedural question. Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
So starting off with Fund 401, the mayor's office, that did go up by $56,000, and that's primarily due to moving an employee that was in general administration over into the mayor's office. That also increased the IMRA, FICA, and Medicare. Are there any questions on Fund 401? Fund 402, finance department, that did increase by $69,750. A majority of that was due to salaries, audit fees, and bank fees. Now, for the bank fees, we are looking at our service provided for that for 2018, see if there's anywhere we can reduce the bank fees.
Now, Mike, these increases and decreases you're referencing are to the documents that were previously-
Yeah, no, this is from 2017 to 2018, the appropriations for the finance department went up by $69,750. Any questions on Fund 402?
Can you, can you talk about the increase and what that, what that's made up of?
Yes, again, the predominant one would be moving the one employee salary from general administration into finance. That was about $48,000. And then the audit services that increased by $5,000 to reflect what the actual cost was or we are projecting it to be. And then again, the other significant increase is to 7091, service charges and bank fees. We had budgeted in 2017, $15,000. It came in at just about $23,000, so we bumped that up to $25,000 to reflect the actual cost. But again, we're going to be looking at reducing those costs.
Mike, what salary was moved from general admin to the finance department?
That would be for Marzal, who is the mayor's secretary.
But that would also, that's the mayor's. You said, you said another salary was moved-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on 402. That would be, I misspoke, I apologize. The full-time salaries include, would be for my salary, which is one of the things that increased, and that would be it.
Okay. I was just, I, I just want to make sure. No, it's fine, thank you.
For Fund 403, the clerk's office, this increased $2,820. There are no significant changes for the clerk's office.
It's $20,000 now?
No, it's, it's $2,000. From the 2017 appropriations to the 2018 appropriations? It was 142,030 in 2017.
Tell me, how about 403?
403, correct.
What was he, what appreciation of appropriations?
Any questions on account 403? Account 404, alderman, that actually decreased by $2,255.
We thank you.
Any questions on 403? 409, general administration, this account went up by $57,100. The salaries, because this question was brought up the last time, include Mark Miller's salary as well as the accrued but unused benefit time payout. The significant increases for this department would be the legal fees, which went up by $150,000 to reflect what was actually spent in 2017. And then there were a couple of contingencies that we put in here, the website redesign contingency for $35,000. But the operating for this overall, for general administration, went down by $22,900. Any question on 409? 410, police department, the overall operating totals went up by $144,000. That's predominantly because we moved the full-time civilian salaries, increased by $70,000. That is to man the police department 24/7 with the closure of the 911 center, which then cascades down to the FICA, Medicare, and then also the part-time officers increased by $10,000. The civilian overtime, again, for staffing the police department 24/7, went up by $33,500. And then there is some building maintenance and repairs. It's $28,000 for a new HVAC system for the server room. If you go next door, right now, we have fans and portable air conditioners keeping our IT infrastructure at a reasonable temperature. We do need to replace that. And then we also increased the vehicle and truck maintenance and repair. We have a fleet that needs maintenance and repair. They're getting used 24/7. Those vehicles do have maintenance costs. Any questions on 410? 414, 911, this had a significant decrease of $588,000 due to the closure of the 911 center. There still are costs for the other contractual at $400,000 that's paid to Orleans Fire Protection District in Cook County, who's doing our dispatching. And then there is still $144,000 in there for telephone. We are going through and doing an analysis to find out what lines we can cut now that the 911 center is closed. We had that meeting three weeks ago. I'm hoping to have results from that shortly.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one question with that, Mike. I'm not sure if you had time to come back with an answer with that. For the telephone line item, 6510, I had asked you, since it's closing down, we're still looking at spend $136,000 on telephones. And I didn't ask the question a couple of pages earlier, the general administration, we have that other one that-
Yes.
About $136 or something like that. So a total of $300,000 we're spending on telephone lines.
Correct. Correct. What happens is on a monthly basis, when we get the telephone going, we divide it out based off the lines that we're going to the 911 center and all the remaining lines that are going throughout the city. And we put the ones that are citywide in general administration and the ones specifically for 911 into 911. And so like I said, we're hoping to get that analysis back here shortly on what lines we can cut. So that number, I'm hoping when the actuals come in for 2018 will be much less than $144,000.
Absolutely. I think it's not a deadline item that I was looking at. I don't see this matter of, you know, bringing it down, bringing down the appropriations. It's more of a, let's, let's make sure we can cut out and make sure we come, we've come way under that, that, anticipate them out.
Yes, and if we have lines we're not using, there's no reason we should be paying them.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Any questions on 414? 420, fire department, the operating total went up by $51,450. This is primarily due to overtime. We increased that by $25,000 to reflect the actual, as well as an $8,000 increase to small equipment that we need to get the trucks and quint and hoses so that we have spares and reserve for all that equipment. The other significant one is under 8040, we do have $7,500 in. This is for a boat lift that we can put our boat, our fire, fire department boat in at the marina so that it can be readily accessible.
I'm sorry, what line item, what's that?
That would be 8040 towards about machinery and equipment, $7,500 for a boat lift. And for that one, we think that we can get one for much less than $7,500. We wanted to put a safe number in. Any other questions? 423, emergency management, this is a new account. We sat down with EMA and went over this budget. It totals $51,750. And these are all things that EMA does need to get their, their fleet working to have appropriate uniforms, lighting, radio, and equipment for the, for them to operate. Any question on 423?
Contractual services, what is that for?
That is for Don March Jackson. Actually, I found out just before I came over here that that actually should be $12,000. When we were looking at the salaries, it was based off of per pay period, not on the way he is paid, which is per month. It just so happened we pulled it from the pay period that he was paid. 425, civil service, this one increased by $31,000 because we are doing entry-level police, fire, and fire lieutenant testing in 2018. For 30 public works, this department actually went down by $56,600. And included for this year, we were looking at redoing the Rock Island parking lot. But overall, that department went down. Any questions for public works? 450, building department, this went up by $17,620. The primary drivers for that would be the new development manager, which we are currently advertising for, as well as the unemployment. Any questions for the building department?
How much, how much would the salary be for you?
We are advertising it at $67,500, but I think that we put in the budget a $70,000 salary for this, depending on the candidates that we get in. 480, risk management, that actually decreased by $230,000. 490, planning, had a significant decrease of $151,736 primarily due to reduction, we're not filling up a planning position, a couple other positions within the planning department.
And some of that will be, was moved to the building department, right? That person's going to-
Both, yes, both planning and department responsibilities. 495, marketing, again, that one decreased by $40,600, again, due to not filling positions. That would be $55,000, that would be for not filling positions. We do have $40,000 in for consulting services. That would be to develop a five-year marketing plan, as well as any marketing services that the city cannot provide in-house that we would have to outsource. 497, rec center, again, this is a new budget for 2018, our new appropriations for 2018. And we sat down with Bob Jackson of the recreation center to go over what these numbers are. Included in the recreation center is a portion of the recreation manager. The other portion is contained within the golf course budget because that's where the position is going to be overseen.
Where is Bob Jackson's salary?
Bob Jackson would be under the full-time component, 5100.
Okay, but there's going to be a additional salary in there?
There's a portion of the additional salary in there.
And where's that? What line item?
That is also in 5100, it's just broken out.
And how much is that?
Dave, I want to, or Dave, go.
61, I'm sorry, $16,250.
It's a portion of the overall rec, rec name for salary.
To me, where was the remainder of that?
Under the golf course, if I'm correct. Yes, under the golf course.
And that's department 500.
And then $51,000 is for the golf course? Or will it come out of the golf course? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, say with me?
Yeah, it was, the way it's presented in this document, 75% of the salary is in the golf course, and 25% is in this department, the department we're looking at now.
Any questions on 497? 520, water department, that one, that did increase by $236,000, $236,000. And the primary drivers for that would be under 6650, which is maintenance, repair for outside contractors. That includes approximately $300,000 for repairs at the main vault where the water from the City of Chicago comes into the city, as well as replacement of a 40 horsepower pump that allows the city to pump water into the city. And then right below that, the other significant increase would be 6660, computer software. This is $49,000 for upgrade to our SCADA system, which allows the city to monitor the water system, and that is outdated and needs to be upgraded.
Is that a one-time charge, or is there a subscription?
I'm going to defer.
Is it a one-time upgrade?
One-time upgrade, and then, sorry, annual?
There's an annual fee, but it's small.
It's small.
Because they're putting it up in a cloud.
Okay.
It's going to be a cloud-based, so there's a fee for that, but it wasn't really, you know, about the money.
Yeah, okay.
It's 200 years on.
And this upgrade will also better allow the city to monitor the number of gallons coming in versus the number of gallons that are going to our residents, which would tie into an audit of our water system and how, how, how much water we may be losing or making sure that we are accounting for all the water that goes through our pipes.
There were the leaks.
Anything on 520?
You also have vehicles in there.
Yes, we have three single axle trucks that the department is looking to purchase. Those vehicles will be used for water-related projects, as water main breaks.
I'm sorry, is that line item 6110?
That would be 8050 vehicles for $105,000.
Oh, okay.
6110 is just for pairs.
Account 400, business district, proud to say that we're going forward with our gateway signs. Those plans have been submitted to IDA for comment and review. We're expecting the comments back in four to six weeks at most. We also allow for the facade program. Any questions on 400?
Okay, no, I, I just caught this one. I know it's, we're not appropriating anything for facade grant program this year, are we not?
It's up on the top. It's up on the top, yes.
Okay, so it just, it's on there twice by accident, or?
Well, it's like the current year expenses were in there, and then they appropriate the same number.
Yeah, there's no, there were no expenses, it says.
It was $3,000 actually.
Okay, so that follows into-
I see down there.
Actual was $3,000, and now it's $50,000, right?
Well, that's what's being appropriate. That's what was appropriate last year. It's supposed to be 10% of the revenues that come in from the business development tax.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's in there, because I just noticed I saw facade grant movement and facade grant program. That follows into facade grant improvement. Okay, thank you.
Is there a reason why there's two different account numbers, or line item numbers?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure what the $3,000 we incurred last year was.
There was a grant, that was an issue.
Oh, that's true.
I just think a new account number made out of the sign, Lori. I don't know why there would be two different account numbers.
That's a possibility, actually, because I know that $3,000 was allocated, so.
550, golf. The golf course did increase by $139,000. That's predominantly due to a couple different factors, one being the recreation manager, which is approximately, what's the dollar number for 75 there? About $40,000.
It's, the total salary that we have for that is $48,750.
In golf?
In golf, yes.
And then plus the 15?
Plus the 16, 250, totaling $65,000. And then there's associated benefits with that as well, that are spread amongst the FICA and Medicare and whatnot.
Mike, when would the recreation manager be hired?
I don't have a timeframe right now, and if we're looking for cost savings throughout there, we could delay the hiring of that position. And by delaying it every month that we delay, would be a month's worth of savings for that Other significant increases, 6350, alcohol bar services went up by $10,000. But again, the more money that we spend there, the more money that people will be spending at the golf course, so there is a corresponding increase. You will see that we are paying our water bill for $65,000. We, under 6541, TV services, it has been requested that we upgrade the television selection at the golf course to allow for golf channel and other sporting events to be viewed there. And we also have $40,000 for parking lot maintenance, that would be to re- And we also have forty thousand dollars for parking lot maintenance, that would be to resurface the north lot at the golf course. Any questions on the golf course?
There's repairs also, correct?
Yes, we have, um, a couple different areas for repairs, we have forty thousand dollars for our outside contractor repairs, that's for things like uh, the roof at the clubhouse, it's missing shingles, there's a hole in the golf cart shed barn that needs to be repaired, um... These are all maintenance things that have been deferred in years past that we'd like to get caught up on this year so that we won't have a larger expense if the entire roof has flooding or, or water damage issues.
How many do we have now?
Seventy-thirty.
Yes.
When were these things, that need for the golf carts?
Uh, yes, I believe that is for the golf carts, yes. And we're on a rotation basis for our golf carts, so every year we get a number of new carts and we rotate out the old ones as parts that basically re-moves. Six hundred motor fuel tax, that decreased by sixty-seven thousand dollars. Seven hundred, eight hundred, that's fire police pension and it does include the three hundred and ten thousand dollars that was discussed at a previous council meeting, towards our pension obligations. Debt services, our principal and interest payments on our bonds. And then the public library is what the public library is. So I'd be happy to go through any suggestions that the council may have so that we can have appropriations that we could see taxed.
All right, go ahead. I just wanna be clear, I, I don't wanna look like I'm picking on anybody, there's two hundred and fifty changes, I think that's pretty fair across the board with all my cuts, so I don't wanna be like, oh, Kevin's picking on the mayor's office or the finance department, but the golf course took a hit, the water department took a hit, everyone, we have to be leaner, we have to be more efficient, we have to operate differently, so I hope I can have your support with some of these cuts, um, so the first one, I wanna make an amendment is four oh one, line sixty-fifteen, office supplies, I'd like to change, or, I'm sorry, line fifty-eight-hundred training, I'd like to zero that out.
I said it's the four oh one?
Sorry, it's four oh one, mayor's office, and then line fifty-eight-hundred training, I'd like that to be zero.
I said hundred, no.
I have no problem. I'd like to increase it, I'd like it zeroed out. Are we gonna hold on these area, what's the procedure of this? I'm just, I'm just curious on procedurally how we're gonna do it.
Would that be a consensus?
It's your motion, Alderman, uh, you make it, you get a second, and then you go out.
I'd like to?
That's how you wanna do it?
No, is there an easier way, like where we could do, I could do all my changes on a page and then we could just do it by a page basis?
No, imagine the easiest way would have been if you had presented the balance, the remainder of the city council with your proposed changes prior to this evening, so they could have reviewed them, that would have been the easiest way.
Sure, I wasn't finished, so.
This is your motion, you want to present all of your cuts at one time, you can do that in one motion, or you can do it by line item, it's, I'm not gonna tell you how to proceed, it's your call.
Okay, I'm just asking procedurally, and what would, what would the council like to do, I wanna, I don't wanna jam this down everyone's throat, but I don't wanna be here for six hours.
If you give us forty proposals, uh, changes, we don't like one of them, obviously we can't vote in mass. There's a, there's a problem.
Alderman, it's his motion.
I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm saying the potential problem, if we voted mass all at once, it's not gonna work. Because now very much, all of us, like, when I, when I vote.
Yeah, I have, I have some more.
Okay, that's your, it's his motion, I don't know.
That's fine, if that's what everyone wants to do, I'm, I'm, I need to go line by line, so.
Yeah, I second it.
I, I have a question on, on the, there's two, there's two motions, I have a question on, on the motion.
Go ahead.
If you have two hundred and fifty changes and you wanna go to vote for each one, and yet's?
I agree.
Whatever, I'll stay here till three o'clock tomorrow, that's whatever, but at least maybe if you, if you wanna sit, we're gonna do it by department, one, one whole page at a time, you know, one, one department discuss, discuss the whole page, have an open discussion and then that way you can.
Well, so far, he's, he's at the mayor's office and that's a hundred dollars, so.
I have, I have more, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying, whatever everyone wants to do, I, I could go by page, I could do line by line.
Is it possible if you get voted on the way it sits right now and, and get approved that way without any changes?
I'm just asking that question, I don't, I'm not sure what the procedures are right now.
It was a motion.
The, the actual ordinance itself, Dave, would have, this has to be presented at the special meeting, which will follow the finance committee meeting, the actual ordinance, but changes through the committee of the whole, the changes can be voted on at this point in time, all right? And then whatever comes of it, for the, uh, full city council, will be voted on as the entire ordinance. And it's also subject to amendment at that time.
Uh, Kerry, this is a quite legal question, might understand that whatever Kevin wants to propose at now, we get, uh, it's gonna go to finance? And they're gonna turn around and look at it, submit to the city council?
No, we're doing it.
The finance committee meeting is going to be for the usual business of the finance committee. What you're doing tonight, or at this meeting, this committee of the whole, is reviewing the appropriation ordinance and determining whether you're going to change it, add to it, subtract from it, or leave it the way it is. Any of you have input as to what's going on? If an alderman makes a motion and there is a second, then you can vote on that particular motion at this meeting and then that will be, that will be a change or revision to the appropriation ordinance that's presented at the special meeting itself. This is a committee meeting.
Which special meeting?
You're, you're, you have a, this is a committee meeting to discuss revisions to the appropriation ordinance. Then there is a special meeting of the city council to follow.
Tonight.
It's two separate meetings.
I understand.
Tonight.
I thought it was just a regular city council meeting, yeah, come on, is that a special meeting?
It's seven fifteen, it's posted at seven for, for seven.
Posted for seven fifteen, but it will, it will follow this meeting.
I got, I was thinking.
Okay, so there's actually two meetings.
That's what I was trying to get to, you wanna, I know it says on the calendar, but I can't quite believe it, I couldn't actually. No city council.
It's the only way to do this.
I understand, I just want a clarification, Kerry.
If we wanna do it by page, I'm happy to go to do all, propose all my changes and go just vote on one, one thing, if that's consensus, so. So I withdraw my motion.
Or voice, or voice, vote all in favor.
So that, so the first one I had was fifty-eight-hundred, zeroing out training, the next one is sixty-fifteen, office supplies, making that three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, next, under that is sixty-twenty, making that seventy-five dollars. Sixty-twenty-five, zeroing that one out. Sixty-one-zero-two, twenty-seven hundred dollars. Sixty-six, six-six-six-zero, computer hardware, making that zero dollars. Seventy-fourty-five, employee office services, making that three hundred dollars. And then last, meetings and seminars, zeroing that one out, seventy-seventy-five. I'm happy to repeat those before I get my motion. It would bring the total down to one-one-four, uh, one hundred thousand dollars, or one-one-four, one hundred dollars.
Compared to one hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, right?
Yeah.
No, no, the numbers are wrong.
No way. Oh, and there should be eleven thousand more, except, something I wanted, there's eleven thousand difference in there, because I had, uh, I had something else I wanted to change, but... So it should be.
That was a total of one twenty-seven, three fifty.
So, so it should be twelve. So it should be one twenty-six, eight hundred. So I'd like to put that on a formal motion.
What is the motion?
To change, uh, those lines that I, I just read out loud.
So your total is one twenty-five, two hundred.
Your total, one twenty-five, two hundred.
Second. Go vote.
No, wait, just kidding, any question?
What question? Uh, just, I wanna know what the meetings and seminars is that was eleven sixty that we actually spent. Jason, hold the detail.
I have, um, seven zero right now.
Thank you, David.
While he's researching that, I just have a question for, for you all, I'm gonna. I know the goal is to, no. Reduce the appropriations. You have two hundred and fifty cuts and just like one line, I just have a question, I'm just, it's a small line item, you know, computer hardware, you know, it was two fifty appropriated, zero was spent, and you're proposing to zero it out, now. I would, I would, I would hope that, you know, all these line items, their goal is to follow them to be as possible, as possible, all come under budget, uh, but, I mean, if you zero certain things out, you know, I'm sure say his computer went out, hard drive went out, you know.
But to zero out, you know, would that mean that you can't mine, or part of it, you know, how would, how would that work? My question. If you zero something out and say?
Can you repair what we got?
What, what are we?
I don't know, I don't know, Alderman, I don't know, I would, could, may, or turn any more bets, could you answer, uh, do we allocate?
This is a spending authorization ordinance. What you're doing, as you're saying, there's revenue available, all right? And one of these expenditures occurs, we can expend up to this amount, all right? Now, there is solvency, flexibility for the finance department to move things around, but it's not advisable to do that. Certainly not advisable without bringing it back to the city council, knowing through what you're doing this evening in terms of discussion. This doesn't say you're going to spend the money, it says if you need to spend the money, you have appropriated this amount for it. I don't know what else to tell you other than that's what an appropriation is. Uh, if you have reason to believe that some of these amounts will not be spent, it's your motion to zero it out. If, if you, if the expenditure then arises, it's a question whether it can be spent on that, it's very simple, so, I mean, it's a, it's a spending authorization. It must be met with revenue, which if you don't have the revenue, it doesn't matter, it's like anything else, you can't spend the money. So, I can't tell you, is it a good thing to zero something out? Or is it a bad thing to zero something out, Alderman, but I'll tell you this, if you zero it out, you basically said we can't spend it unless we go back through this, this little S, or, uh, endeavor to do it through this evening, and then we're gonna slip.
That's, that's the only concern, yeah, I would agree that I, you know, I do wanna, you know, reduce costs, who doesn't here, right, who doesn't wanna fall under budget, but that's, that's my thing, if you wanna, you know, reduce it, um, you know, I was certainly looking at supporting that, but, uh, you know, to completely zero something out, or you don't know the unknown.
I'm, I'm flexible on this, so if there's something, please speak up.
This is, sorry, I let you finish, it's a, it's a small little line item here, uh, and, and that's all, but I just wanted to mention that across the board, and not just for this little, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars, that's, you know, what... I, I don't, I'm not even, like, even spending this amount of time on this discussion for that, I, I just wanna put that out there.
Alderman, if I may also tell you this, you, you have a finance committee, which I believe meets twice a month or every two weeks, I'm not sure, which reviews expenditures, uh, that are to be made or that are proposed, and then brings them to the city council for approval on a regular basis at your regular meetings. Now, just looking at what you did last year, you pro, you appropriated thirty-six million two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And you actually only spent twenty-six million seven hundred thousand. Now, I don't know what went into your appropriation last year, I have no idea if you went through one of these sessions, or two of these sessions, or ten of these sessions. But you have to rely, I think in part, on the fact that the, uh, folks that prepared this appropriation from the finance department, attempted to anticipate, based on experience, what might need to be spent, and set aside or set up funds or funding for those expenditures. You also though have the ability, as a finance committee and then as a city council, to approve or disapprove of expenses that occur, to approve or disapprove of salaries if they come before you, and to approve or disapprove of virtually any expenditure that is being proposed. But if you wanna go through this every time you zero something out and have to decide whether you're going to add something here or supplement something there, that's your choice at the city council. This is not saying you're going to spend thirty-five million dollars, or thirty-seven million five hundred thousand dollars, this is saying that these expenditures, if they occur, there is money in the budget for them. I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor for the appropriations to change to one hundred twenty-five thousand two hundred? Okay, there is a motion and a second, so then we do a roll call, right?
That would be, that would be the next step.
Go on, what are we doing here?
Roll call, we're still, we're still on the question. Are we going to have a question, Alderman?
It's just, in the last year, we've had, for lack of a better term, cost overruns in a lot of departments. Things that we didn't appropriate for, that we did end up having to spend for, so if we, if we knock something out, I don't think it's a big deal, I mean, last year just under professional consulting in general administration. We appropriated ninety thousand, we ended up spending a hundred and forty-two thousand, if it needs to be spent, it will be spent.
But the appropriation for general and administration was larger, well, probably actually went over. Was under the total amount that was appropriated?
And Alderman, this, if we're zeroing something out or we wanna have this discussion, it's not, if they wanna come spend it, they just have to bring it back to the city council and say, hey, the mayor's computer went out, we need to spend this on this amount, and actually, it's better costs, it's better watching the cost of these things, Alderman, Karen, Alderman, Frau, so, so we're not going with these, these crazy cost overruns. And I'm not zeroing tons of stuff out, I'm just, it's, it's more of a control, not, no, I, I know, and I'm just trying to ease some of Alderman Frau's.
Yeah, I, so, Alderman, I very much appreciate that we've been brought to. We should look at this.
I'm sorry, and I, you know, it's great to look at this and I, you know, support your effort to do that all night. But I am concerned about, you know, say, look at, you know, again, and not to go too much further into what Alderman Frau went through, but...
but, uh, reducing office supplies from five hundred to three hundred and twenty-five dollars, reducing postage and shipping from a hundred and fifty to seventy-five dollars, uh, things like that, it's, it just seems like it's so granular, and we spent that much money last year, actually we spent more, so if we want them to come back to us and ask for additional postage, and additional postage and shipping, it just seems like those items are just getting a bit too micro management.
Sure, but, so, to let you answer your question, thank you Alderman for, for the questions, answer your question, sixty-twenty, they spent fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents last year, and, for a whole year in postage, seventy-five dollars is more money than they spent in postage last year, twenty-five dollars more, same thing with office supplies, they're going to have to buy less pens and pencils, and, and crayons, and whatever else they're buying with office supplies, it's, it's the exact same thing that they spent last year, it's just, I know it's granular, but it adds up, these dollars adds up, we had to get under thirty million, and I, this, this took every night after work, I was going home and cutting, and cut more, and I tried, I could have zeroed that out, and we don't need any more pens, but that's, that's, it's the reality where we're at, this is, this is the reality, and this, it's a hard decision, no one wants to make hard choices, and this is the first one, it's going to get niddier and grittier, and there's going to be even more unpopular ones. I don't want to be the bad guy, but someone, I was elected to make tough choices, and these are, and I'm just using this in a general statement, there are tough choices we have to make with this, thirty million dollars is what we took in, we're under twenty-nine million with this, that's, I want to keep it then, I will support the appropriation if we keep it under thirty million dollars.
Well, okay, I appreciate what you're saying, and I do agree to put it to a point, but the fact is that appropriation is not a budget, it is simply a cap, and the his, the city's had a pretty good history of coming in significantly under the appropriation, this does give the city the ability to be flexible and make decisions without having to bring, you know, really minor things before city council, and stop our, the progress of what we're trying to do, I guess. So I am concerned about looking to make the appropriation number smaller, when it isn't actually going to affect what we actually spend, in all likelihood, because we didn't spend that much money last year, we didn't spend that much money the year before, we didn't spend that much money the year before that, and the commitment from, you know, our director, and I guess from the whole city staff, is to work diligently to bring these costs down, in doing so, I mean, there, I'm sure there's exceptions, so I am concerned about tying their hands, you know, too much.
Sure, and, and to just answer your question again, or to make a statement, there's also a bunch of revenue enhancements still on the table, so this, this, what we're doing should kill all those revenue enhancements, the water increase, the garbage increase, the restaurant tax, this is, this is what we need to do, we need to, we don't want to add.
The audience, please. What'd you say? I, we're, we're not, of course, we're not considering. Did I hear you say drop dead?
I did.
You know what, I'm not going to even comment. All right, thank you. So, revenue enhancements are on the, you know, agenda tonight, we're going to talk about that obviously later date, um, and I don't think it's correct, I mean, to assume that whatever we do here will affect any of the revenue answers, because there are reasons beyond what's in this document for that, so, um, probably, I don't think that's really what we're considering tonight, it's really just what are we going to look to spend based on what we currently have, you know, in terms of restaurants.
Okay, so in the past, we, on this administration, we set in place where, before there were any expenditures, um, there were two directors that would sign off on the, what do you call it, the bill, and I'm wondering, what is, is that still in place, or how, how are we watching the spending? Before the man, before any of the managers or supervisors, et cetera, had, there was a chain of command, and then before anything was spent, it was approved by two directors, so what's going on now? How are we watching the spending?
That same chain of command is in place through our financial software, uh, purchase order gets inputted, it gets reviewed by, um, a supervisor before goes to the department head or director, ultimately, it comes to my desk for review of my questions, I ask questions, and we have a very good staff that brings things to my attention before I have those questions. So those, those safeguards are currently in place.
But there were two different people that were, two different directors that were.
So, for example, uh, let's say.
That had to sign off on it.
Let's say the chief of police needs badges for his employees. That, uh, purchase order gets inputted by his secretary, it gets approved by the chief, and then it will come to me for my approval, so there are two, two separate reviews and approvals.
I'll move the previous question if there's no one.
Roll call, who spoke?
So, we're, the motion in the second was to approve the recommended changes by Alderman for, for, for section four of the mayor's office. I'm sorry. John, I'm sorry.
Give me the credit. Oh, I didn't, I.
It was, it was seconded by Alderman.
Okay, so Hawley.
No.
Hawley, no, Ferenwald.
No.
Ferenwald, no, Osling.
No.
Pardon me?
No.
Osling, no, Thompson. Thompson, no, Carr.
Yes.
Carr, aye, Fitman.
Aye.
Fitman, aye, Slattery.
Freddy Money Saving, aye.
Slattery, aye, Kulos, no. Kulos, no, Frausto. Alderman Frausto.
Still, still thinking about my book.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I don't know.
Frausto, no, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Viera.
No.
Viera, no, Vida.
Aye.
Vida, aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Seven, no, and six, six.
Motion failed.
Seven, no. And six, aye.
No, you don't have to make a motion to remove anything, just, I'm automatically.
The motion was to amend. Section four. Line items, yeah, Alderman, Donahue, we suggest it should be amended. That motion failed.
So moving on, uh, four of two in the finance department, I'd like to amend, amend this, uh, on this one, I, on the first line, I know there's a two percent increase in salaries, so I remove that for the full-time employees, so I'd like to change fifty-one hundred to two thirty-three, four seven two nine eight, and Dave, I might need your help on this because it, I know it's going to change the, uh, the numbers on the other stuff.
Well, if you do, um, you mentioned two percent, and, and the two percent was built into certain employees who were not brand new, and, so it, it can't be a blanket two percent, it is going to involve a calculation.
Okay.
So if we wipe out, and, and the two percent, we, we're not saying everyone's going to get that, we just wanted to have, again, as, as Mr. Carey pointed out, uh, that we leave room in case we have the authority to go to certain workers.
So what's?
It may be that, there's no raises given, it may be there's a one percent raise, it may be two, yeah.
Sure, so what's the current, the current salaries of the four employees in the department? Is it two thirty-three, four seven two, and ninety-eight cents?
Look over at that just now. Okay, the current salaries are two thirty-three, four seventy-two, eighty-four.
And what, how many cents?
And eighty-four.
Eighty-four, okay, so that's, I would like to change it to keep line item fifty-one hundred is two thirty-three, four seventy-two, and eighty-four cents, which removes the, the two percent increase for those, those four employees.
And the associated benefits?
Yeah, that's where I was, I need your help to remove.
Well, yeah, those would, would be adjusted, uh, down by approximately two percent, but we can go, I'd have to go through the math and, and pretty much all, but yeah, I understand what you're going with that.
Okay, and then, so the next one on here, fifty.
Well, what, excuse me, excuse me, this can't just be a, we have to guess at it, what line items would also be affected by that, so that the rest of the board of the city council understands.
It's line item fifty-four hundred, employee FICA. So that's generally. Sorry, sir. A six percent tax that I will pay, employer Medicare, the next line down, fifty-four fifty, and then also fifty-five hundred, employer I M R F, so those would all go down by approximately two percent. Do you want me to go through a recap of each of those right now?
Yeah, if you, if you could, please.
Okay.
So while he's talking to me, can I just move on, that's what I was, just for the sake of time, so next, fifty-eight hundred, making that one hundred and fifty dollars, sixty-fifteen, making that seven hundred and fifty dollars, sixty-twenty, one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and if I'm going too fast, just tell me the stuff.
What's fifty-eight hundred and the next one? What was sixty-fifteen?
Sixty-fifteen, Mr. Horvath, was, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The next, sixty-twenty, one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Sixty-twenty-five, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Sixty-one, zero-two, two thousand, six hundred dollars. Sixty-six, twenty. So, sixty-six, twenty, seventy thousand dollars. Sixty-six, sixty, two hundred.
Sixty-twenty is seventy thousand?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Horvath. Sixty-six, sixty, two hundred and fifty dollars. Seventy-ten, fifty dollars. Seventy-thirty-five, zero dollars. Seventy-fourty, zero dollars. Seventy-sixty-one, eight hundred dollars. Seventy-seventy-five, zero dollars. And then finally, seventy-ninety-one, twenty-three thousand dollars, and I'm happy to repeat any of those. Or answer any questions?
Is this a formal motion in there?
I have not made, I was just making, uh, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Do you have a go in total?
It's, I was waiting on Dave because of the, I didn't have the FICA numbers, so I'm not sure how to do the, uh, the formulas proposed.
Okay, so FICA under this two, and I'm, I'm just going to round them up to the nearest hundred, if you don't mind, just to make it round numbers.
Is that okay, Mr. Horvath?
I don't give the numbers.
It'll be thirty, instead of, uh, so line item, uh, let's start with the first one, fifty-four hundred, FICA would be fifteen thousand two hundred, instead of fifteen thousand seven hundred. The next line down, fifty-four fifty, employer, employer Medicare, instead of thirty-seven hundred, be thirty-six hundred. And then the I M R F, instead of thirty-four two, would be thirty-three two, thirty-three thousand two hundred.
Go ahead.
That line item sixty-six twenty, was being proposed to bring down the seventy thousand dollars, what is, what is that a hundred and seventy appropriated for what?
That would be for professional consulting, would that be our consulting for?
For Dave and for John.
Right, so this, and this was, the reason I, I went with this one here, was no offense to Dave, we did hire a, a full-time finance director, and I know the reason we had, brought Dave on, was we didn't have a finance director at the time, so now that we have a finance director, I don't think it's imperative we have a finance director and a finance consultant doing the same work, so that's the reasoning behind that one.
With, with him being on board now, we would, we would expect for those consulting fees to go down?
For twenty eighteen, yes, we are anticipating those consulting fees to go down.
Could you project how much? If, if not, that's fine, just.
I, I wouldn't be comfortable with, with projecting that right, right now.
A hundred thousand dollars.
Do you have an idea?
I would estimate it, it's going to be quite a bit less, yes, probably more in the hundred thousand range than in the, and, and, well, I, I can't speak for Kasperic, but it, it's going to go down considerably, yes.
And your, your contract's different than, than Johnny Kasperic's, yours is more of the finance backdrop side, which we brought you on because when Matt left, we needed to have someone with, as I was, quasi-finance director, so again, it's no offense to you, it's just we have a, a full-time finance director now, so it's, I was just looking, just, it's redundant, it's a redundant cost.
I think you approved by resolution a contract for Mr. Meyer's firm, as well as a contract for Mr. Kasperic's firm.
Yes, we did.
And I'm going to presume, I don't know, I'm going to presume that this number of one seventy is reflective, was reflective of the costs that were anticipated in each of those contracts. Correct. And last year, you expended a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars on professional consulting in the finance department, right? Correct. So, I think you have to go with what you approved as in the contracts, but, you know, Alderman, it's your game, you play it.
We're going to have a motion on the floor yet?
Just a motion on the floor.
Are we having a discussion now, or?
What'd you say, I'm just pointing out.
Yes, we're just having a discussion.
Just for discussion, Mr. Horvath, the contracts for the consulting firm is hourly rate.
I understand that.
I just want to make it clear to the Alderman.
I'm just saying, if you're budgeting or appropriating, using those as a guide, that's what the finance people did, and I'm just pointing that out to you as a city council, just to remind you of that fact. That's all I wanted. You should be reminded of.
So, conceptually, I, I understand what you're doing, I mean, it makes some sense, but also, again, the appropriation is not the budget, and we look to our director of finance to control the budget, and these are just maximum ceiling numbers, so I mean, we can go through this exercise and do this, and that's okay, in some cases I'm all for it, but on something like this, where they've acknowledged that the going, that the goal is to reduce the cost, and I think they're very dedicated to that, um, I, I don't know that I want to go down to seventy thousand, I could sound like a.
I'm flexible to change it, I'm, if you want to change something, I'm, I'm very flexible.
I don't see any, the problem is I don't have any good numbers in front of me to say, well, we should be, it should be a hundred, it should be a hundred and ten, I'd rather just go a hundred and seventy and let them deal with it and report us as time goes on.
How about a hundred thousand? It's a discussion.
Yeah, I know, but I have no information, really.
We have to come down, though. We have to come down, though.
I think it'll be dollars. Yeah.
Go ahead. All these contracts renew every year.
Yes.
One contract, and Mr. Kasperic, is it more than a year contract sign?
For Kasperic, we actually entered into a two-year agreement for the audit, and it's a one-year for Dave's firm.
But it's hourly.
But it's hourly, correct.
So essentially, if you stop here seeing right now, it would be number one. What is saying?
This is hypothetically, yes.
Go ahead. I think we'll be here all night long, so I'll just make a motion with the changes.
Section.
Okay.
Another question. Is there a second motion?
Yes.
Uh, with the reducing cost element, I don't have numbers either for that one seventy, but to drop it down by a hundred thousand, I don't know if that's right call either. I don't know, throw a number to be safe, I don't know, I'm twenty-five. You know, I just, I don't think that going down to seventy, you know.
Didn't, didn't we just, didn't we just say a hundred?
No.
Nancy said it.
I said a hundred.
I'm happy, I'm happy to change it.
All right, go ahead, make a motion.
Fred has a motion, he has to change his motion.
Second.
Second.
Make a motion to amend it to a hundred thousand.
Second.
Second.
I'll start.
So then we'd mean, line item sixty-six two-zero would be changed to a hundred thousand. Is that what you're saying?
Along with the other changes on the same page.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, but your amendment is to just change that number.
Yes.
Well, I, again, I don't know whether it's enough from that. It doesn't sound like enough. I don't, I don't know what is enough. I believe the grand total, Alderman Thompson, is five eighty-two, zero, four, seven, and I have eighty-four cents.
And it's to reduce this by what is it?
Hey, well, the new number, I, I believe with the changes for the FICA and everything else included, is five eighty-two, zero, four, seven, and eighty-four cents.
Motion second, pro con.
Holly. I did have a question. I wanted to, to clarify the full-time salaries. It was budgeted for a full-time director for the whole year, and he was only here until January. So I just, I'm trying to figure out, and I know what he was making. So I'm just trying to figure out what's in the full-time salaries, and is that over what it needs to be, actually? So we take into account, or did he have enough accrued vacation that he was paid for the whole year?
We paid that out already.
That is- But is that part of the one sixty-four?
That was paid out in twenty seventeen.
Yes, that's part of the one sixty-four.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's part of the one sixty-four.
Yes.
So what's out, what is adding up to the two forty-three?
That would be for-
Because your salary is less than what he was making.
Correct. You're my salary, Lori's salary, Julie's salary, and Pam's salary. Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
So last year, they didn't appropriate enough, apparently, if Matt were to stay for the whole year. They apparently knew they were getting rid of him.
I don't know what we did last year.
I believe that number was changed. When, when we came on board, we were, we came in right before the appropriations ordinance was passed, and that number was altered to reflect his absence. And then, I believe, if part of it was left in there in case things changed during the year.
Okay.
Right, we did the appropriation after Matt left.
Right, okay.
So that's not true.
Dave, did you do a total here? Did you do a total here?
No, because I was, I was busy calculating everything when all the numbers were being set. So I don't have all the numbers written down. I can re-total it, though, I have the, I'll listing all the changes. I can put it in the computer more quickly.
It's a roll call.
It's a roll call.
Holly. Aye. Holly, aye, Farinwald.
No.
Farinwald, no. Osling.
No.
Osling, no. Thompson. Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos. Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
No.
Viera, no. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Nine ayes, four nays.
I wanted to just clarify, that was a roll call to amend a motion. Now we have a roll call for the additional changes on the page?
Yes, and it's, that was the amendment.
Amendment for just that line, the motion we got.
Motion.
So I need to know.
No, I never had a motion.
Okay, so we, we changed all these figures, we just talked about the one, but it's all approved under the new figures. I just wanted to clarify.
What were you, what, what did you think you were voting on?
I amended it, changed it from seventy to a hundred, leaving all the other changes alone.
Your amendment, all right, we had a motion and a second on the floor for Alderman Donahue's suggested changes. You then made a motion to amend line item sixty-six twenty from one hundred and seventy thousand to one hundred thousand, okay? And that was seconded. That amendment was not voted on, unless you're, what you just did was to vote on the amendment. Now, you can't just amend and not change-
I'm clarifying what this chair understood.
Doesn't matter what the chair understood. You made a mo, Alderman, you made a motion to amend his motion. You got a second. So the motion on the floor was with respect to your amendment. Now, the, well, you gotta be, you gotta be correct here. So you amended professional consulting from one seventy to one hundred thousand, okay? Now, you have to decide whether you're going to approve the changes as made with, in line with Alderman and Bellato's amendment. So that motion now has to be decided on by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Morbath. I'll make a motion for all the changes.
Motion is a second. Kulos, question?
Holly.
Uh, no.
Holly, no. Farinwald.
No.
Farinwald, no. Osling.
No.
Osling, no. Thompson. Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Still aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera. Viera, no. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Eight-five, really?
Okay, go on, big board, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Uh, so this one, everything I changed is pretty close to what we spent last year. So the first one is five eight zero zero, training. And I made that a zero. Then underneath that, postage and shipping, sixty twenty, I made that nine hundred and fifty dollars. Under that, printing and copy expense, seventeen hundred dollars.
Number was twenty-five. I'm sorry.
Sixty, yeah, sixty twenty-five was seventeen hundred. Then sixty-one, zero, three, service contracts, three hundred and fifty dollars. Sixty-six, twenty, two hundred and fifty dollars. Sixty-six, six, zero, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. The vehicle sticker program, seventeen thousand dollars. Seventy-thirty, which is rental and leasing fees, one thousand, one hundred dollars. And then last on this page, seventy thirty-five, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Before we make a motion out of this, I'm just, I'm looking at this. And whose salaries are included in four oh three, under fifty-one hundred? Because that, the list that you sent me, Mike, is Mr. Hoyerzer and Linda Cottor.
Under that- That's correct.
But that ends up to a lot more than eighty-four thousand, one hundred.
Well, part of their salary, uh-
It's under the water.
Lit into the water department. So seventy-five percent of their salary remains in the clerk's office, and the other twenty-five percent of their salary goes into the water, on top of their department five twenty.
Because approximately twenty-five percent of the time that they are working in the clerk's office, they're working on the water department and water-related issues.
All right, all right, I'm good.
I'm flexible with all those. If there's anyone who wants to change any of those numbers. Like you said, I kept a really close in mind of what we spent last year.
I think we should, we should hold the salaries in every department. So that matter, the non-union salaries, we should hold off on the two percent increase. It just seems, you know, if we're, if we're struggling, I don't see how we can just start paying out two percent. I know it's not a lot of money, but in the end, it is.
How would, how would, I'm sorry, um, because they're split, how would we take the, the raise out? Would we just take it out of the water department? We'd have to remove the two percent from here?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Is that a motion, Candace?
I don't know if a motion's a motion. I don't know if a motion-
I thought she was making a motion. I thought she was doing a motion for no increases. No, two percent increases, but they want your motion.
Let's just stand.
I don't know if we wanna go department by department, or just, all of, just-
We'd probably change, change them all, though.
I would like to state for the vehicle sticker program, we did have a lengthy discussion about what happens year after year, as we typically have some minor changes that happen, which would account for that increase of from fourteen-five up to eighteen thousand. Maybe Randy could elaborate a little bit more on those changes.
Well, it, it's just with the, there's additional expenses when they pay through green pay. And also on the postage side, there's, the reason that was up a little bit was every other year, I send out reminders to, to people for their vehicle stickers, and this would be the year for that. That theoretically would generate more than enough revenue to offset the increase, but I can understand if we wanna put that off again.
Keep it at, so you wanna keep it at eighteen thousand? Eddie?
Well, if you look, historically, it's gone up a little bit each year. But I, but I can, I can, I could probably make it work.
But by having the U team, that gives us a little bit of flexibility, as this is an appropriation. We can spend up to that amount.
This is, the only thing about it is vehicle sticker program, which, like I say, that, that does, it's a revenue generator. If I, if we, you know, I-
Sure, let's try. All right, so I, I'll keep that one at eighteen thousand. But with that change, the total then would now be one twenty-seven, three fifty.
One twenty-seven, three fifty.
The salaries in this department are being left below the average.
Let's have Dave, guys, go figure, so. I figured it is already working on it. Do you want, you wanted me to eliminate the two percent increase? That's the danger, how would we do that?
I, I don't know. I understand the, um, what is the history been on salary increases act? Have you seen it recently?
Last year, there was a one percent for non-union, and I've looked at the police, fire, and public works contracts, but they also did receive an increase in twenty seventeen.
No, if I could give you a comment. Thing about the salaries that struck me is that the highest salaries that we're paying out are people who haven't even worked for the city for a year, and they're all around ninety thousand dollars. So now we're gonna give them, I mean, they haven't even been here a year, and they're making close to, or they're right at ninety thousand dollars. And now we're gonna give them another eighteen hundred on top of that? It doesn't seem-
If I could stop you real, just for a second, the, anybody that was just hired was not included with, with the two percent. It was only the people that have been here all year, in the calculations that were made.
In the calculations?
Yes.
Okay, because the sheet that Mr. Marzello sent me, they're included, and it just doesn't seem-
I created a, a third column, two percent. All right, I got you.
So in, in this number, which is it?
For the eighty-four, one hundred, that does include the two percent.
That's correct.
Okay.
No problem.
Yes. Twenty-five percent for student, sixty-five percent for student. I don't, my pay is, right, my finance.
Okay, so the, that would take the salaries down to eighty-two, four, sixteen. Let me scope's eight, I'll show the exact amount, eighty-two, four, sixteen. And then the FICA would go down to fifty-one, fifty.
Colin said bring it down to eighty-two, the actual for last year was eighty-one, four, oh, nine. Wouldn't it remain the same?
Well, I'm, I'm working off of what their scheduled salary was.
I can answer that. Governor Carr, they, they rolled out of expense checks into salary in your question. And this includes the range, so.
Okay, so, so FICA, five thousand, one hundred and fifty. Next line down, employer Medicare, twelve hundred. And the next one down, employer I R F, eleven thousand, two hundred. So I have the grand total of this whole department right now at one twenty-five, seven, sixty-six.
I'd like to put down a formal motion to other.
Motion is your second, uh, the new, any questions? All of them gone?
Just wanna clarify, fifty-one hundred, eighty-two, four, one, six. Fifty-four hundred, five thousand, one fifty. Fifty-four fifty, twelve hundred. Fifty-five hundred, eleven thousand, two hundred. Fifty-eight hundred, zero. Sixty twenty, nine fifty. Sixty twenty-five, one thousand, seven hundred. Sixty-one oh three, three fifty. Sixty-six twenty, two fifty. Sixty-six sixty, one seventy-five. Sixty-six seventy-one, eighteen thousand. Seventy-thirty, eleven hundred. Seventy-thirty-five, four seventy-five. Is that correct, Mr. Donahue?
That's correct.
You got a motion second? Any other questions? Go ahead. None? Broke office.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Now I got it. No.
Farinwald, no. Osling.
No.
Osling, no. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos. Kulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
No.
Viera, no. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Ties, no.
I move on, your own. Thank you, sir. So next, Alderman, the only change I had in this one is seventy, seventy-five, and I made that a zero.
No motion, this is an easy one. You were zeroing, zeroing that out, right?
I had to zero that out. So line, line seventy, seventy-five is zero, so then your number would be ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Motion is a second. While the car, any questions? Bro call.
Holly. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald?
Aye.
Fernwald, aye. Osling?
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos?
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Frausto?
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera?
No.
Viera, no. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. 12,900.